Hello, folks. Good afternoon. We do have a quorum, much to my pleasure and surprise at the same time. I want to just give one half a minute, 30 seconds, to Chief Achilles to give us a little weather update because it's actually good news. So Chief, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hopefully, everybody's going good as far as being hydrated. We're watching radar. We know this has got a little more cloudy, a little windier, but I think for the next couple hours, we're okay. If there's any change, we'll let the moderator know. Thank you.
Does everybody, did everybody bring back their red voter card? If you don't, if for some reason you misplaced it or you left it in your car, whatever, we have replacements. So if you want to stand up or raise your hand if you need a red voter card, the clerk will make sure you get one. Looks like we're okay on that. Okay? All right, great. Many thanks. Many thanks for your diligence here. All of you are doing your neighbors a service by having us be able to go right on time. We'll go to Article 21, CPA Flag School Assessment. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the Article 21 as written in the warrant.
Receive a second. Second, Mr. Mills, please explain.
So this was a request from the Historical Society to do an assessment of the flag school behind the townhouse. They want to figure out what the original paint color was, look at what the restoration would be for the windows, and also fix the stairs, both coming into the school or the building and exiting.
All right. For those that don't know, the flag school is a historical building. It's actually behind Pilgrim Church, between Pilgrim Church and the ball field, a small white building that used to be a school and now houses the historical museum. Any comment or question regarding the motion on Article 21? Seeing none. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your red cards. All opposed. Motion carries. Article 22, CPA Trail on DCR Land.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Article 22 as written in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? All right, Mr. Mills?
So this is a request from the Trails Committee that's going to connect a significant port, portion of the Southborough Trails with the Boroughs Loop. This money is needed to get access to the land from DCR.
Okay. Any comment, any question regarding Article 22, regarding the trails? All right, seeing none. This is also a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so now we are, we had Article 24 on the consent list. It was held. So we're going to move to Article 24. And is that you, Ms. Malinowski? All right.
(inaudible)
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Baraschio.
Sorry. I apologize. I thought, I forgot that that one was held. I thought it was still on the consent. Article 24, I move the town vote to amend the interest rate per annum from 4% to 2% and increase the income limit gross receipts from $20,000 to $45,000 under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, 41A, which regulates tax deferral for homeowners 65 years or older pursuant to the authority contained in Chapter 136 of the Acts of 2005 of the General Court, thereby amending Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, 41A.
Okay. Does it receive a second? All right, it does. I was presuming to see somebody at a microphone who had held this earlier, but let's have you spend a minute, Ms. Baraschio, just explain what Article 24 is intended to do.
Sure. The senior property tax deferral program known as Clause 41A allows people 65 years or older to defer their property taxes until their home is sold or conveyed. This article will change the interest rate charged on deferred tax liens from the current 4% to 2%. It also will increase the income limits of applicants from $20,000 to $45,000.
All right. Thank you. Comment or question regarding Article 24? All right, seeing none. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 24, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Article passes. Motion passes. All right, we had another hold from the consent list earlier. That's Article 28. Who's, who from the, Sam? All right. We'll have Mr. Stivers give the motion on 28.
I move the town vote to adopt provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17, to allow the Board of Selectmen to reduce the statutory speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour on any or all town-owned roadways in thickly settled or business district areas.
Does it receive a second? Yeah, and just, it's a verbal typo. It's Section 17(c). Mr. Stivers.
Oh, sorry.
But, but, that's all right. Yeah, go ahead.
Quick comment. We receive ongoing concerns expressed by residents for speeding on various town roads, particularly places like Pine Hill, Oak Hill, Middle Road, Parkerville. And this does not require us to do anything at this point. It creates another tool that the town has to deal with speeding issues. So we will have the ability to change the speed limit of 30 miles an hour, which applies throughout town generally as the base speed limit, to 25 miles and under circumstances where we deem it appropriate to manage speed. So again, a control tool, not a requirement to do anything, and we think it makes sense to approve this. So I would appreciate your support.
Okay. Comment or question on the motion on Article 28? I guess the holding parties maybe didn't make it back, so that's okay. Seeing nothing then. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Article 30, to adopt Mass. General Law for Local Meals Tax. Ms. Malinowski.
I move that the town vote to impose a 0.75% meals tax on the sales of restaurant meals by accepting Mass. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 64L, Section 2A. The implementation date of the meals tax will be at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, but not before January 1st of 2022.
Does it receive a second? It does. Ms. Malinowski.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Cook, the Chair of the Advisory Committee, to explain as they brought this article forward.
Hi, everyone. You may remember the last time we were together inside. Advisory had said that one of the things we wanted to focus on for the next year was to try to find other ways to raise revenue than real estate taxes, to take some of the burden off real estate taxes. So this is one of those ways. Towns and cities have had the ability to add this tax since 2009. You may recall that when you go out to a restaurant, you pay 6 and 1/4% sales tax. This would increase that 6 and 1/4% to 7% for restaurants and fast food in Southborough. We believe it's the right thing to do because, number one, it raises quite a bit of money each year. $125,000 to $140,000 is an estimate, and it's a pretty good estimate. The DOR gives us this number because the restaurants already file meals tax returns, so we know what sales are. So it's very easy to compute what we would receive for this. So you basically ask the restaurants to change their 6 and 1/4% to 7%. They collect it from customers. So this is passed through to customers. It's not a tax on restaurants. They then collect it, remit it to Massachusetts, and then they cut Southborough a check every quarter. We intentionally wanted this to be postponed to, no, earlier than January 1st to make sure our restaurants get back on their feet because of the pandemic. This was on the warrant last year, and we postponed it for obvious reasons. And so here we are again. So we think it's the right thing to do. All the towns around us already have the local meals optional tax. More than half in Massachusetts do, including places where you probably go, Boston, Cambridge, Newton, et cetera. So we think it's the right thing to do. But to be sure, we went to almost all of the businesses affecting the Southborough when we were trying to look at this a couple years ago and talked to them. None of them had an issue with this. Doesn't mean they were jumping up and down saying, oh, please add a tax, but they didn't have an issue with it. They understood it's being passed through. We asked them specifically if we thought it would affect their business. So for example, if you've got a $50 meal, it would add 38 cents. If you had a $100 meal, it would be 75 cents. So we asked the question, would that make someone not want to come to your restaurant? And they said, no way, especially since everybody around us is already collecting it. And so then the other thing that we wanted to make sure everybody understood is, if you go out to eat in Southborough, you probably see a lot of people who don't live in Southborough. So this is a way to basically generate revenue for Southborough from people who don't live in Southborough. So when you go to Framingham right now and get a Starbucks cup of coffee, you're already paying their 7%. So it basically is just allowing us to, to collect the same 7% in Southborough from people who whiz through Southborough in the morning on the way to the turnpike. So, simple as that, we think. There was one restaurant, when we started talking about this initially, that was opposed to it, but the opposition was because he was in the process of selling his restaurant. He just didn't want anything to upset that, which it wouldn't, and it didn't. So everyone else said, we're fine, and just kind of shrugged their shoulders. They had some other issues with the budget in Southborough, but it wasn't that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that in a nutshell is what we're asking you to vote for.
Thank you very much. Comment or question on Article 30? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All in favor of Article 30, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Article 31, Bylaw for Public Accessibility Committee. Ms. Baraschio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to adopt in Chapter 9 of the General Bylaws, Article 10, to be entitled "Southborough Public Accessibility Committee", Sections 9.34 through 9.35 of the town bylaws as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? It does. Ms. Baraschio.
Thank you. This article replaces the current ad hoc accessibility compliance committee and makes it a standing committee of the town of Southborough.
Question or comment regarding Article 31? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. Is this general bylaw? All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Article 32, Ms. Cook.
Article 32. I move that the town vote to amend the provisions of the Southborough Code, Section 9.8 and 9.12 thereof, as printed in the warrant. So this is the advisory bylaw that establishes the advisory committee, which is why advisory is proposing this. So there's three things we'd like to change with this amendment. One of them's easy. We want to add officially the role of vice chair. We've had a vice chair for several years, but it's not in the bylaws. We'd like to add that officially. So we've got a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. Second, we would like to reduce the number of members of the committee from nine to seven, which I'll explain in a second. And third, we'd like to add the ability for a, one advisory member to act as liaison to the newly proposed Capital... Help me, guys. CIPC, Capital? Okay. CIPC, which, what is it? Okay, sorry, guys. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, which you're going to hear about in Article 33. So 32 and 33 are connected as far as that piece of it. Okay, so as far as reducing the number of advisory members from nine to seven, seven is just a better number, which we know. We've had seven for quite a while. We've had two vacancies. And it worked with seven, and it's worked really, really well. No one misses meetings, which they tend to do when there's nine, and you've got enough people to do the work and not too many people. So we're asking you to do this based on our experience. There are, if there's any other committee in town with nine, I don't know what it, what it is. I was on the Public Safety Building Committee, which is one of the best-run committees I've ever been on, and we had nine, and it was still too much there, too. So we're asking you to support reducing the number officially from nine to seven. The third piece is, Article 33 is going to ask you to make the CIPC a permanent standing committee. Currently, it's an ad hoc committee. It's a temporary committee. The success of the ad hoc committee is such that we really do think we need this to be a standing committee. And as in the standing committee, advisory with their current bylaw can't be on it. And we would like an advisory liaison to that committee, which is part of that bylaw. So we'd like to add the language to allow advisory, for this one exception, to be on the newly-formed CIPC as a liaison. And it is a permanent committee. So this is a one exception to a rule that we can only be on ad hoc committees or a committee appointed by the moderator, which is pretty specific.
So before we get to the microphones, Ms. Cook, I'm going to ask you to withdraw your motion and make it again because your motion ended with, as printed in the warrant. And in the warrant, the number nine still shows instead of seven. So I think you want to make, you want your motion to reflect the summary at the end of the warrant article.
Okay, so you want me to read this motion again and put seven instead of nine?
If that's your intention.
That's my intention.
Well, then it needs to be, the motion needs to reflect that.
Okay, so I was about to do that before you asked me to do it, but there is a typo in the actual printed motion in your warrant. We always meant it to be seven, and there is just a mistake. It says nine still. We wanted the nine to be crossed out and to say seven. So we're going to amend that motion to make sure that we get the seven. That's what you're voting on.
Well, we're not really amending a motion. We're withdrawing the first one and making a new one.
Okay, so I'm withdrawing the first one, and I'm making a new motion. And it says, "I move that the town vote to amend the provisions of the Southborough Code, Section 9.8 and 9.12 thereof, as printed in the warrant, except for, we would like to change the number nine to seven."
Does that receive a second? All right. It's technical, but it's important. Any comment or question regarding Article 32? Yes?
As a member of a family that is full of veterans and law enforcement, it's...
Sorry, ma'am. I do need you to...
It's alarming to me.
No, no. Name, name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Karen Schimpkes, Lindbergh Road.
Okay.
It's alarming to me, the rapidity with which some of these articles are passing without discussion, particularly on the diminution of democratic rights. And I see this as one of them. I'd like to call to the attention of my neighbors and fellow citizens that by state law, advisory members cannot belong to another committee, only an ad hoc committee. So, you know, obviously, they cannot be on a committee, including Capital, considering, you know, how, considering critical matters on expenditures and then making recommendations to the town on how to vote. That's a conflict of interest according to current state law. So advisory committee is supposed to be a separate committee. It's supposed to be acting and advising in the best interests of the townspeople objectively, in an arms manner, arms-length manner, separately from any committee, including Capital Planning. So I would call voters' attention to a document that's posted on the advisory webpage. Without advisory committee independent review, the town meeting would be at a severe handicap in voting on financial matters when all of the recommendations are coming from one source. Separation of powers was designed by our founding fathers for a reason. Defended. Defended. I urge my neighbors and fellow voters to vote against Article 32 and Article 33. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Betsy Rosenbaum, 5 Strawberry Hill Road. I just had a question, something I wasn't clear on. Ms. Cook, you use the word liaison to the committee. I guess I'm not sure what you are asking for, but I don't see liaison in the warrant article. Would the advisory members be full voting members of the committees they are seeking to be in?
Yes.
Okay, so...
And Betsy, I believe liaison is in 33? No? Okay, so, no, never mind. Yes, they would be full, the intention is for them to be full voting members.
Okay. How long have you been on advisory? A long time.
A long time.
And you feel that this hamstrings your independent review and what you report to us, and this is very important to you?
I don't feel that, I don't agree with Ms. Schimpkes, if that's what you're asking me. I believe...
No, I don't know how I feel on it because I'm not sure what you're asking for. I don't know enough about what it's going to do in practice.
The reason we're asking for the exception to be added for this one, to possibly be approved standing committee, which comes next, is that we feel that the connection between Capital and the budget is so close. I mean, Capital is a really integral part of the budget. So we believe we should liaise to that committee. We want to make sure that that committee has the perspective of advisory as far as the overall budget because Capital can be really, really significant. So we think that one committee is, should have an exception as far as rule against participating on standing committees.
And I have a follow-up question, if you know. I saw a comment on my Southborough to the effect that what you're proposing would violate state law. I looked up state law. I saw one provision on appointment of advisory committees. I didn't see the language referred to in state law. Does anybody who speaks for your board or town council, is this violative of state law? Because I'd like to know that moving forward.
Yeah?
News to us, so let Mr. DiPiano.
Thank you. I couldn't find it in the statute, but I'm not a paid, I don't get paid to give legal advice to the town. Sometimes I give it for free, and it...
I'll have town council address that.
Thank you.
The answer to the question is that it's not a conflict, and it's not violative of any administrative procedure based upon the language that's in the bylaw.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Cook.
All right. Right over here, sir.
Whitney Beals, 10 Chestnut Hill Road. And I'm curious to hear from you, Mr. Moderator, why there are only seven standing members of the advisory committee where there's supposed to be nine?
You want to come up, Jim? Yeah, I, I'm happy to answer the question. I think if I'm going to, if I'm going to get substantively involved, I'm just going to have Mr. Hegarty come up and moderate the rest of this question.
Good afternoon. The Assistant Town Clerk has just sworn me in as the Assistant Moderator for this article, or Acting Assistant, but I'm what you got.
So Paul Samino, 3 Austin Kelly Lane. Town bylaw calls for nine members of advisory committee. As moderator, I nominate the advisory committee. I nominate the Personnel Board. I nominate parts of the Public Works Planning Board. I have said in the past, and it's on the town website as well, I take the nominating piece of my job as much or more important, I approach it with as much or more care as I do the job you see me do here. You use the phrase standing number, Mr. Beals. That, I would only clarify that there is no magic formula, that I haven't decided seven is the number, five is the number, nine is the number. The number is nine. My intention with regard to advisory is to have the highest functioning non-elected board in town. And I believe we do. I believe our current advisory committee is tremendous in its diversity and its makeup, old, young, men, women, kids, no kids. And it does a tremendous job on behalf of town meeting. I find it to be extremely important to be very careful about the composition of advisory so that it can be, it can have the maximum impact on behalf of town meeting that it has. And so I, it is extremely, extremely difficult to find volunteers to join advisory. It's an extremely grueling committee to be on. There are a lot of folks who have thoughts and ideas about it, but are not, certainly not in a place where they want to step up and...
Excuse me, I have to interrupt you. Chief, do we have thunder here? Is the fire chief here, please?
Well, I hear it, Jim. We do.
Okay, it's a safety issue here. I'm going to...Chief, could you come up here, please?
Well, I'll finish answering while he's...So, for lack of a better phrase, I believe that the advisory committee is, is composed very well right now. I'm not opposed to an eighth or a ninth member, but I do believe they should be, they should, they should complement the group. And that, and that is to say, add to the diversity, add to the heft of the group. Our advisory committee should be the best not elected board, not elected body that we have in town.
Well, I appreciate that, but I find it somewhat troublesome that you alone make the decision about how many members are on the committee, whereas there's supposed to be nine. That's mandated.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I'm not suggesting I make the decision about how many. I have two vacancies. I'm not opposed to filling them, but I think that, there are hard vacancies to fill. That's, I'm not going to quarrel with you about the number nine.
Well, it troubles me, too, to think that if this body votes to reduce that number to seven, then suddenly there will be only five. And we'll consolidate the thinking and perhaps the decision-making into a smaller unit. And that's not good for the town.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that it would consolidate, and it's not a good idea. That would never be my intention.
So you're saying that you're not in favor of reducing it from nine to seven?
I don't have a substantive opinion on that. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to give it.
Okay. Well, I just, I wanted to express my concerns. Thank you.
I understand.
Okay, another person, please.
Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road. I'm asking town meeting to vote this down. We just heard from the moderator, this is, advisory is a grueling position, and now you're asking them, members, to sit on another very hard-working committee, Capital Planning? And I say, there's something intuitively wrong with the proposal. We have advisory for many years charged as an independent review of warrant articles coming before the town. And even though this says that the advisory committees sitting on Capital Planning won't count as the quorum, I'm not sure who's voting, when, on which committee. And I really don't think we want the independent review committee advisory that overlooks all of the budgetary items to be made up of members who sit on another committee that set those budgets. And I think both of those committees are really hardworking and deserve the full respect of what that committee, as an independent committee, should be working on. And I think the townspeople shall have full confidence that advisory is looking at projects proposed by Capital Planning as truly independent and not having some members having a foot in the other door or the other committee. And I think... And I think it's challenging to do and merge these two jobs into one. And there was a comment by, and a respectful to Chairman Cook, that it would allow them to have better communication, something to that effect, she said. And I attempt, that committees, all committees need to be communicating and not be working in a silo, so that when capital planning has a project, they go to advisory to be reviewed, and that's where their communication happens, or there's nothing to prevent advisory to go to a capital planning meeting. That's how town government works, and I therefore ask you to vote against this article.
Thank you. Mr. Cleary?
Jim Cleary, fifty-one, fifty-one Central Street. I'll step back a little bit. I don't agree with you, Freddie, on this one, and the reason being, I get to be chair of a committee that was going to take and spend a million dollars for one piece of equipment, Town of Southborough, for the fire department. We knew it was going to be controversial, ninety percent of the town told us, you'll never get it, why are you even bothering? We brought in a member of the Board of Selectmen to be a voting member of the committee, we had one from advisory to be a voting member of the committee. I think seven is a good number. I'm presently with the Board of Fire Prevention and Regulation on a subcommittee representing the Electrical Board on solar issues, there are thirty-two of us, and I wonder, when I get off for an hour of a virtual meeting, why in God's name did I sign up to waste all this time? Because you've got attendance problems and so on and so forth. And I think with a seven or nine, if we decide on seven and vote on that, that's fine. The town meeting decided seven will be the number. You can't make people come and be committee members. You want definitely members who are qualified. I've seen board positions open in the town, and I'd kind of like to do it, but I don't feel I was qualified to do that type of thing, for that board. In my process with that truck I talked about, having the selectmen, their representative going back to the board and saying, hey, look, this is what they're trying to do, and there was conversation amongst themselves, bring this back to your fire truck committee, see what they think. There was all this open and two-way communication between advisory and also between the Board of Selectmen and the committee. To make a long story short, we got the town meeting, and we spent almost a million dollars for a fire truck, and got it through unanimous vote. Without that effort, and from advisory and the Board of Selectmen, we probably would have lost that vote. Number two, I had a friend on the original capital budget committee, and they left, eventually that got disfunkt, and their viewpoint was, advisory doesn't have time to listen to us, no one listens to us, why bother wasting our time? I think having a seat there will give the opportunity to go back to these bodies to speak, then at times maybe a joint meeting would be called to be done. We get stuck at town meeting year after year when you'll see the Board of Selectmen say, yes, the advisory says no, and you almost say, why can't you talk to each other and come a compromise? This is not Washington DC, and we certainly do not want that in our town. I think this is a golden avenue to help that communication work. It certainly worked for us, and that was probably one of the more rewarding things I have ever done, working with the town. The only ones that upscaled us was the Public Safety Building. You guys up scaled us, you brought it in on time under budget.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Sir, you're next.
My name is Joe Palmer. I live at one fifty-eight Parkerville, and I'm a member on the capital committee. And I'd like to start by saying that people that have their concerns, those were talked about, about having members on the BOs and advisory on the committee, and I can tell you that we need them as an invaluable resource to the committee. The knowledge, the associations throughout town, the links, the guidance. We don't necessarily all have deep ten, fifteen-year memories of what's gone on in this town, but most of them do, and those are very important to making decisions and developing a guidance from where we are, and it have been in the past, to where we're going in the future. As part of the capital committee, we're also gauged with looking at a total ten-year plan. Without advisory, without the BOs in support of these plans, we don't have plans. They need to be part of the process in developing a ten-year capital plan. I urge you most strongly to vote in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Healy?
Thank you, Mr., whatever your title is, something moderator. Again, Marty Healy, eight Upland Road, and also a member of the Board of Selectmen. I think both of the things that are being done here make an awful lot of sense. Number one, I mean, I was on advisory for a long time, and nine, not just for advisory, for any committee, is pretty unwieldy. I just think seven is a much more effective number. I don't think the town lose any, loses anything by it going from nine to seven. There is no state law that talks about this from a conflict of interest standpoint. The law, if you will, is the town's bylaw. That's what blocks it, and so that's what this would change. And, you know, we talked to John Butler, you know, I went back a lot of years on advisory, and nobody could really pinpoint the exact reason that language originally found its way into a bylaw. I've got a pretty good idea why it was there, and for instance, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense for somebody on the advisory committee to be on, and I'm not picking on anybody, but to be on historical, or to be on conservation, or to be on some other board who is going to be, among other things, requesting funding for their own budget. That's where you've got the potential for a conflict of interest. That's affirmatively not the case here. It's not like members of the capital committee are getting the fire truck, or are getting the DPW chipper, or whatever the capital recommendation happens to be. The capital and advisory, and I think one of the reasons capital sort of wasted away eight or ten years ago is because the functions of advisory and capital really interconnect so much. That being said, you know, a year ago, you know, some folks made a pretty strong pitch for why we needed a capital planning committee. We created an ad hoc committee. That ad hoc committee had members of advisory, because it could, had a member of the Board of Selectmen, and the proof is in the pudding, that committee functioned as well as you could want a committee to function. It's one of the reasons our, the numbers in the budget went down significantly is because the efforts of that committee, and in no small part because the members of that committee included members of advisory and the Board of Selectmen. So I just think that to vote this down is being penny-wise and pound foolish, and I would encourage you to support it.
Thanks, Mr. Healy. Mr. Provo?
Joe Provo, two High Ridge Road. I heard in the positive side, a lot of mentions of, not about the number, just about the cross-membership, the communications, the deep history, and direct reference to, as Ms. Cook mentioned, liaison sort of roles. So, in the text, there's nothing about liaison or ex officio in nature, so I didn't know if there was any way that advisory could speak to specifically why it needed to be a voting member, which seemed to raise the concerns from the negative side.
Ms. Cook, could you address that, please?
We didn't spend a whole lot of time talking about that piece of it. There were three members from advisory on the original capital ad hoc committee, voting members. So we just haven't spent a lot of time on it. If the hall thinks that we, you know, if you approve the, being on the committee, the better way to do it is ex officio, okay, but, you know, we end up with tie votes, et cetera, if you don't have a, you know, you've got an odd number of committees and you take one away from it. So I just, I don't recommend that. I think that the advisory committee members should vote. And I just wanted to address what Ms. Gillespie said. Freddie, you may not recall this, but advisory has been on lots of committees in the past. Public Safety, the Study Committee, and the Actual Building Committee, we've been on the road committees. So we have occupied almost every major committee where there needed to be a major decision made. So this is not the first time we have asked to be on committees, this one happens to be going from ad hoc to standing, and we do think there is, as Mr. Healy said, a total interrelation between what advisory does as its core job and the capital planning committee. You just really can't separate the two. So we do think it is the right thing to do to allow one, and only one, advisory committee to be on that committee as well as a BOs member. Did I answer what you want me to? And we just really didn't spend a lot of time talking about whether to make it voting or not.
Yeah, it was half on the fence of proposing an amendment, but I think you explained it enough for me.
Thank you, Mr. Provo. Mr. Hamilton?
Al Hamilton, thirty-five Pine Hill Road. I served on the prior capital committee, and was chair of that committee, as well as served on the advisory committee, and I'm the author of the ad hoc clause in the bylaw. The, Jim Cleary is absolutely right about why the capital committee went away. It was simply, its work was almost irrelevant when seen from the perspective of the advisory committee. The issue for me is, town government really consists of two parts, because we don't have a judiciary. There's an executive function, and there is a legislative function. We are the legislature. The advisory committee is a subcommittee of the legislature, us, sitting here in this hall. It is not, and should not, be intimately involved in executive actions, and I believe, as currently proposed, the capital committee is, in effect, a committee which is part of the executive branch of our government, and we should not mix those two. I believe there is, in fact, a simple solution, and I'm going to offer an amendment, and that is to amend Section Two to say, allows advisory committee members to sit on a standing committee as a non-voting member. I believe that will solve the case, because then they are not actually part of the executive. Now.
What? Sorry.
Mr. Hamilton, could you tell me which section you want to modify again? Which chapter? Very good, thank you. If you please see Mrs. Berry over there.
Can I follow up with a question?
Actually, Mrs. Schimkus was at the microphone first. Please go ahead.
I think I was, the only one.
Sorry about that, I didn't look to my left.
Go ahead, Freddie, no problem.
Mrs. Schimkus, go ahead, you've been recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that the document that I was reading from, calling for separation of powers, and the very critical importance of that, is published by the Massachusetts Municipal Association. It is posted on advisory's website, and it states that even the committee members should be vigilant about attempts to bypass their critical function of providing independent and carefully considered advice to this town meeting. So again, I would urge you to not support this. However, I think, given, and I do not agree at all with the legal interpretations of this, the most disappointing advice we have been given is often from the legal world.
Excuse me, could you please step back a little bit from the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, there are different interpretations. When I speak about conflict of interest, I'm speaking to state law and just the pure common sense of separation of powers, not diminution of the value of the voters' say in this gathering. We have to be very careful of that. We're giving away something here, and we should not be doing it, and we should not be doing it by virtue of this document that's posted on advisory's own website. So given the amount of disagreement that we have here, I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely. This requires more discussion, more conversation and understanding about what's going to happen. I don't think this is drafted correctly, and we have disagreement about the legal interpretation of what's right and what's a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Okay, if you intend to make that motion, you're going to have to wait until Mr. Hamilton makes his motion, which is at first, and I will also allow Mrs. Gillespie to speak as well. Mrs. Gillespie, you just please speak now. Mrs. Gillespie?
Freddie Gillespie. I want to comment on Catherine's comment that only one member would be on in the capital group. That's not how I read it. The way it's written says you can only sit on one.
This is Hamilton. Mrs. Schimkus, you make a motion from the microphone to indefinitely postpone. I'm sorry, go ahead, please. I apologize for the interruption.
And that means you could have many, as long as they're not sitting on other standing committees, and that's how it reads to me. And secondly, right now, didn't we just recently have three advisory committees sitting on capital planning? And that seems to set an expectation of where this is headed.
The answer to that last part is yes, there's two right now, but Freddie, the Article thirty-three that's about to follow limits the advisory participation to one member. So we did take care of that with thirty-three. So if you don't pass, if it passes, it's got to pass, obviously.
So if you don't pass thirty-three, that limitation's not there. So you shouldn't pass thirty-two expecting thirty-three.
Mr. Hamilton, could you come up here, please? I just want to confirm exactly we want this in the article, so I'm not sure from your motion. Could you come forward, please?
Actually, I believe this is actually better inserted in Article thirty-three.
Okay, then.
So I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir. Mrs. Schimkus, you wanted to make a motion?
Thank you, Jim. I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely Articles thirty-two and thirty-three as written.
When everyone in favor of this motion, please raise your card. Everyone in favor, to indefinitely postpone the article, raise your card. Second, I'm sorry, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
I hear a second. Everyone in favor of this motion, please raise your card, red card. This is only a motion to indefinitely postpone the article. All opposed, please raise your card.
Question.
I'm sorry.
Article, sorry, she said thirty-two and thirty-three. You haven't moved thirty-three before.
This is only Article thirty-two.
She said thirty-three, too.
Negative. Article thirty-three has not been introduced. This is only Article thirty-two.
Well, because they're interrelated.
It doesn't make a difference, it's not, it hasn't.
Do you wait until after thirty-three?
Mrs. Hamilton, we can only do one thing at a time here, there's been no motion to suspend the rules, we have to address articles one at a time.
Okay, then I'll have to modify that to be, to postpone indefinitely Article thirty-two. Thank you.
Okay. Article thirty-two. All right, just to clarify the hall, there's a motion on the floor to suspend indefinitely Article thirty-two. Is there a second of that motion, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor indefinitely postponing Article thirty-two? Please raise your red card. All opposed, please raise your card. Okay. Confirming quantum of vote for this. Majority, the motion fails. Next person at the microphone, please. And this will be the last person I'm going to call on Article thirty-two.
Regina McCullough, five General Henry. I don't remember the rules on how this gets done, but I do remember in prior meetings, we've put thirty-two on hold so we can go to thirty-three and come back to thirty-two? That's what I'd like for us to do, because I'm not sure we can truthfully answer thirty-two unless we understand thirty-three.
You have two options here, okay? One option is to lay, a motion to lay Article thirty-two on the table. That requires a majority of vote, it doesn't kill it for the entire session, it can then be brought back at any other time in this meeting by the hall. All right? I want to just take a sense of the hall, whether the hall thinks that's a good thing to do, where we could just plow through thirty-two and get to thirty-three. How many people think that we should just, a sense of the hall, how many people think we should just vote thirty-two as it is right now? How many people think we should just lay this on the table and go to thirty-three? All right, we're going to go ahead with thirty-two. Okay. No further discussion on Article thirty-two, this requires a majority vote. All in favor of Article thirty-two, please raise your red card. All opposed? One more time, please. All in favor of Article thirty-two? All opposed? I'm sorry, we're going to have to count the hall. Would the tellers come forward, please? Ms. Cook, because you've been a speaker on this, I don't think it's appropriate for you to be a teller? Yes? Come on over here? I need one, Andrew, come on up, please? Yeah, but you didn't speak, you can do your speaking. Sam, would you mind being a teller for this? Sam? Do you solemnly swear that you hold your responsibilities and act in impartial manners as a teller in this article? Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Cook had been a teller sworn in earlier, but because she was someone that spoke on behalf of this advisory, I think it's inappropriate for her to act as a teller. I've sworn in Mr. Stivers to act as a teller for this article. I've sworn in Mr. Styvers to act as a teller for this article. No disrespect to Mrs. Cook, I just think it's best to separate this out a little bit. At the end. Okay, the tellers in place? All right, we ask everybody, please, to remain in the area you are. If you see it or just standing, just please remain where you are. And if you're in favor of this article, please raise the red card and hold it aloft until we tell you otherwise. Thank you. Okay, tellers, please count. This is... Okay, you can all please put your cards down now. Other tellers ready to count the days. Okay? Would everyone who was opposed to this article, please raise your red card. Please keep your cards up in the air, please. You guys all set? Okay. The people on my left side, closest to the softball field, can put your cards down. The people in the center, please keep your cards up. And the people on my right can put their cards down. But just the center, please leave your cards up, they're not done yet. Including the people in the back, please. Can I ask the people in the back with the water to please make another pass through the hall and bring water to people as they needed? Are the tellers in the center section done? Great. In the center, please drop your cards. Thank you for your... Hey, you're in my chair. Can I grab one of those? While they're counting the votes, Mr. Hamilton, did I understand correctly that you thought that this, your article would be, your amendment would be more appropriate for Article 33? If it's your intention to do that, would you come up now and make the amendment, please? Mr. Hamilton, come on up with me. We could just use the same form you had, we'll renumber it.
Yeah.
Okay, if you want to change it. Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. The vote for Article 32, Article 32 failed by a counted vote. Seventy-six opposed, 50 in favor, so Article 32 fails. Okay, I want to ask you a question now about... Mrs. Cook, I have a question for you, if I could, about Article 32 and Article 33, because Article 33... Does Article 32's failure affect in any way the language as currently in Article 33?
It affects it more heavily than that.
Okay, great. Mr. Hilly, please, thank you. Mrs. Schimpf, I see at the mic, but I think we need to resolve this before we move ahead on Article 33.
Thank you, I just have a question.
Okay, let's...
Thank you.
This might resolve everything.
So, are we past Article 32 and are on Article 33 now?
Yes, we have... Article 33 has not been moved. Before we move that, I want to just, for the... Because these two articles are intertwined, as the Board of Selectmen is being the proponent of Article 33, I want to ask you how you think this impacts anything?
It impacts it in that my motion now is to indefinitely postpone Article 33.
Okay. We got a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 33. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 33, please raise your red card. All opposed. Article 33 is indefinitely postponed.
Thank you, Mr. Hegarty.
Excuse me. May I ask a question on 33? McCalla, 5 General Henry. So, does that mean that the committee will stay ad hoc and not permanent? Or did we get, do away with the committee totally by not acknowledging Number 33?
That will be a decision for the Board of Selectmen. And it's not going to be made today. But I think, I'm trying to remember, maybe Ms. Bracio or Mr. Sty or somebody else, I don't think we put a time limit on it. So, unless some further action by the Board of Selectmen, it currently exists in its, the form we created.
Sir, are you here on Article 34?
Yeah, I am.
All right, I just want to be absolutely clear. So, Article 34, zoning miscellaneous. Mr. Nicholson, please.
Greg Nicholson, 68B Flag Road. I move Article 34 as written in the warrant.
Receive a second. It does? Mr. Nicholson, please explain.
This article is really just a way of updating an existing provision in the zoning code to make it more compliant with current statutes and case law, but also to make it more flexible for homeowners to replace non-conforming components of their house in kind. So, it's really just a cleanup motion.
All right. Questions, comments regarding Article 34? Seeing none, Article 34 is a zoning article, so it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. While in favor of Article 34, please raise your red cards. Well, I've called the vote. Sorry, it's not appropriate at that point. Thank you. You can put your cards down, all opposed. All right, I declare a two-thirds majority on Article 34. Article 35, zoning regarding outdoor illumination.
Hi, good afternoon. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning code of the town of Southborough, Article 3, entitled Use Regulations, by replacing there, too, Section 174-12.1, thereof, entitled, excuse me, outdoor illumination, as printed in the warrant, with exception to the Scribner's error in the definition of hardscape, always intended to read 10 feet, not 100 feet, per the language from Page 35 of the IDA IES Model Lighting Ordinance definitions.
Okay, does that receive a second? Okay. Ms. Houlihan, please.
So, I would like to move to make two more additional amendments.
But can you just sort of give a couple of sentences so the folks sort of understand the overall impact here?
Yeah, sure.
The overall intention.
Sure. Thank you for that.
Yep.
So, Marnie Houlihan, elected member of the Planning Board, and the goal here is I will be looking to make two immediate amendments to the outdoor illumination bylaw. As we collaborated with the Board of Selectmen and Advisory, there were specific requests made from each party or committee, and we've adopted those into the new language. And that is the subsequent second amendment, first amendment that I'll be making and the second amendment. And I think it's best that we, as a town, think about the outdoor illumination in the full, with the two new amendments written in, that were not included in the warrant because the warrant was printed so far back.
Okay. So, just to be clear then, the Article 35 is printed in the warrant, is it entirely new or a replacement outdoor illumination bylaw? Now, Ms. Houlihan is prepared to amend that, to amend what's new that's in front of you in your warrant, if I understand?
You do.
All right, please proceed.
There was also some handouts that provided this amendment language. If you have those handouts, you're invited to read those along. I move to amend the main motion by striking the words in subsection B, "The replacement of fixtures or luminaires shall be subject to the provisions of this section and comply with guidance outlined in the Rules and Regulations for Outdoor Illumination maintained by the Planning Board. Non-conforming fixtures or luminaires requiring replacement for any reason, per ends, including but not limited to end-of-life, breakdown, vandalism, and per ends, shall be replaced in compliance with this bylaw." And by substituting the words, "Those existing luminaires which are not in compliance with Section 174-12.1 entitled outdoor illumination, as of its effective date, shall nevertheless be considered in compliance, provided such luminaires satisfy the previous bylaw provisions as enacted by the town meeting on April 11, 2005, by passage of Article 40 thereof, until the replacement of fixtures or luminaires is required as set forth herein. Fixtures or luminaires requiring replacement for any reason, including but not limited to end-of-life, breakdown, vandalism, shall be replaced in compliance with this bylaw and further comply with the guidance outlined in the Rules and Regulations for Outdoor Illumination as promulgated by the Planning Board."
Does that receive a second? All right, it does. Can you explain that amendment?
Certainly. So, this was specific language which basically helps to clarify that nobody has to go out to Home Depot and Lowe's should this bylaw pass and buy new light bulbs. This means that whatever's in your fixtures now, as long as they comply with the current bylaw, because the current bylaw does actually apply to residents today, then you're in no obligation to go buy light bulbs that we are requesting change in their color temperature. And this was opined, written by the working group, and then town council opined and helped with that language. And this directly addresses the Board of Selectmen request for clarity of this language.
Okay, thank you. Any comment or question on Ms. Houlihan's amendment to the main motion? Mr. Cleary.
Jim Cleary, 51 Central Street. Those who have seen me at town meeting always see me step up when there's zoning issues. Who enforces this and how is it enforced? Who was the one that actually checks all these lights? And how is that done?
For this specific amendment that we're discussing, Mr. Moderator, the whole outdoor illumination? Is that what I'm answering?
I think, yeah, I think it's an appropriate question on the amendment, but it is more general for the bylaw itself. I mean, we have a current bylaw. I'm sure he'd be interested in the answer to that with regard to the current one as well, right? Who enforces it? How's it done?
I would say so. This is kind of all related, is where... I'll go ahead. I mean, myself, I think, whether you want to go to the general bylaw, I think all that we all understand have to understand in this whole issue, in all zoning issues. Every zoning issue the town of Southborough passed has a cost analysis to it, even though we like to think it doesn't. And I'm starting to get concerned over this because I remember the argument over Bond Lane over... the argument over Barn Lane, over who measures the grass being in the backyard for open space. They said the building commissioner. All these things add on and add on. And I'm concerned that down the road, the Board of Selectmen here, well, I need an assistant and I need a part-time employee or maybe another full-time employee. We see this going on and on. So I think any zoning article or any, like every financial article we face today in the town, at this town meeting, had a financial curve to it. We understood what was going to cost you and I. But I think in the past, in my argument with disagreement with, sometimes with the Planning Board, was there was a cost to everything. And as a taxpayer, I want to know, first of all, is this thing going to be enforceable? If so, by who? And when? And what is it going to cost in addition to the town with existing personnel? And I think that all should be handled out long before even that comes to town meeting. But I want to hear your answer.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. I appreciate the question, because I'm sure it's on everybody's mind. So the current bylaw, the outdoor illumination bylaw that we're looking to change, actually applies now to all of us, to every bulb on every lot in Southborough. So the enforcement that's in place today is the enforcement that is in the zoning, which defers back to the building inspector. We are not proposing any changes to that enforcement statement.
So all along, we expect the building commissioner, whoever it may be, present now, Laurie LaVoldi, and whoever may be in the future, is going to patrol the streets at night and somehow measure lighting on a house. I mean, I'm not trying to be a wise guy at this, but it's frustrating to me, because I've been called out in the town of Southborough, and I've never thought I'd ever see the citizenry of the town be this bad, with spotlights shining in neighbors' windows, because they're having a neighborhood feud. And there's nothing I can do about it, but I'm out there volunteering my time, because I don't get paid by the hour, and I don't have any benefits. That's not an argument, not a problem. But as I see these type of things come forward, and I do support them somewhat, but I think even with our past bylaw, it's unenforceable. We think it is, but in reality, isn't. And how do you measure that? I know how to measure with a lumen meter, sure I do. And light down city off property, I knew how to do that, because I'm a wire inspector, I'm an electrician, with a master electrician, with almost 40 years of service. But I see the original bylaw as being a failure, because it's not in the job description. There is no planning on how that would have been implemented, along with the open space bylaw that caused the problem on Barn, up on Barn Lane. And I think when we move forward, and I wanted to bring this issue up for all of us, including the Board of Selectmen and Advisory, when we have these things come forward in our own planning board, that negotiation of how this is going to be done and cost analysis, in fact, to make sure we have, we can enact all of, all these provisions we want. And if we don't have a tool that's in place, that how this exactly has to happen, it's going to fail. Our lighting bylaw we have now has failed, because we did not have that tool in place. So until we, my viewpoint, I hate to do this, but I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone this, and see if we can get the original bylaw written properly, and figure out how we are going to enforce this bylaw, so that there is concrete evidence at night, that the police department get a call, or there's calls out, or lighting shining in neighbors' yards, in neighbors' lights, we would have the provisions. Who would be called? How would it be tested? What would stand up in court? Certainly, a person showing up saying, yep, I think that light's too bright, isn't going to work. And don't forget that some of our neighbors are capable, and financially capable, of taking this to a court case. And if we're not trained professional at doing that testing necessary, we will probably not prevail. I make a motion to indefinitely postpone.
All right. Mr. Cleary's made a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 35. Ma'am, you're at the, you're at the mic. Are you wanting to speak to the article as is or to the, to the motion?
Probably to the motion.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Yes, to the motion of indefinitely postponing. I am not in favor of that.
All right, all right. Hold on. Let's get it on the floor first.
Point of order, right here.
Oh.
So we are on the First Amendment.
Correct.
So is he indefinitely postponing the First Amendment?
No, no, no. It's a, it's a good question. I'm waiting, I needed a second on that. So Mr. Cleary, I believe Mr. Cleary's intention is to indefinitely postpone Article 35, but Ms. Houlihan is correct. There's an amendment on the floor that we have to dispose of before we can come back to the article overall. And if there is any question or comment about the amendment that's currently on the floor, that's, that's appropriate at this time. Yes?
Betsy Rose Boom, 5, Strawberry Hill Road. I'm not sure how I would vote on Mr. Cleary's motion until I got more information. So does that make my question relevant to the pending motion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hamilton?
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. So I have a real basic question. I have two light posts along my driveway. They both have lights that produce about 1,200 lumens. When I, when those bulbs go out, do I have to get town-approved light bulbs? Or can I just choose the light bulbs that I want to use?
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. So I was just looking for the specific phrase. So it's under applicability, and this was my point, that it's to the bulb. The only bulbs that this applies to are to spotlights and floodlights that are 60 watts and greater, or equivalent to 900 lumens. But a sconce, a light post, landscape is for 800, 1,800 lumens or greater, which is about 120 watt bulb. And most of the, like my sconces, my light posts, don't take more than 100 watt light bulb. So this would not actually be applicable to those light bulbs. Mr. Hamilton?
Well, let's, let's be clear about this. Watts and lumens are different things.
Correct.
Very different things. And so, in fact, my 1,800 lumen bulb may only draw 60 watts. In fact, it'll probably draw significantly less than that. I think Mr. Cleary will agree with me. And so if I want to put a very bright light in my front driveway to make sure that the deer stay away and protect my house, I have to get an approved light bulb. Is that correct?
The recommendation in the bylaw is to choose a 3,000 Kelvin temperature, which is more conducive to reducing blue light at night.
So.
Yes.
So this is not a recommendation. Bylaws are not recommendations. Bylaws are laws. So I have to get a light that you approve of?
You stated your light bulb was 1,200 lumens, though, correct?
At the, at the moment, but you know, I might want to, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be.
So if it's 1,800 lumens or greater, that is when we would ask you to buy the 3,000 Kelvin temperature light bulb?
No, you're not asking me, you're telling me. Please, let's be clear about this. This is a law.
Exactly. We are telling you in the bylaw. And there is, currently, there is state legislation in the House and Senate proposing the same type of language to be able to reduce blue light emissions, artificial blue light emissions at night, because of the health risks and environmental risks. So the bylaw is proposing that this town adopt a policy, and as citizens in that policy adoption, to choose a blue, less blue light emitting, which is 300 Kelvin. And I'd like to ask-
We're not choosing. You are telling us we have to. Please, you know, let's be clear about what a law is. Thank you.
Right. Excuse me. Mr. Hamilton, currently, the current bylaw tells you this, too. The 1,800 lumens were not changing, so that is applicable in the current bylaw. So there's nothing changing regarding that light bulb purchase.
All right. We'll come back over here. You're, you're speaking now to the amendment?
Well, that question seemed to be to the article. I just want to know if Advisory has a recommendation for us.
Do you have a recommendation on the amendment? Okay. Advisory, as written, does not support the article, but if this amendment passes, they do.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes. You're, all the amendments. Fair enough. Okay, I'm coming over here now.
Marguerite Landry, 134 Deerfoot. As far as enforcement of light bylaws, if you look at the building department, the building inspector, her job title is building inspector/ enforcer of the bylaws. So that's where it's supposed to be happening. And I'd also like to speak as a street that is suffering from light pollution, very much in favor of this article.
All right. Thank you. Right over here.
I'll come back to the same argument. The significant difference between building and zoning and engineering light measurement, that's different. Building commissioners and building inspectors are not, should not be expected to be experts on everything, yeah, measuring trees, distances, and so on and so forth. I would expect that. But now we're getting into lumens and measurement of lights. You saw Al Hamilton's argument with this whole thing. My whole goal all along is we need a lighting bylaw, that we need definition on exactly who and how and when and cost analysis these things will take place. What you have right now, I don't, don't believe at all for a moment, is in fact, legally enforceable, despite what you may think of your, with the plant, what the building commissioner could do, or any building commissioner. Then we get into the qualification, tools required, and training required, and certification for actually making these measurements that will be upheld in accord of law. You do not have that in your existing bylaw. We're going to amend and add this to the, a change in the bylaw, and we're going to walk out here with the same problem we have, that we've always had. And the other thing, I warn the taxpayers, and I've been at this town meeting for a long, long time, everything we do costs money. Does the building commissioner, or her, or the next one, two years from now, saying, I need a four-hour part-time guy to enforce this? Oh, no, I got to hire an electrical engineering company to come in and do this? All that needed to have been discussed and finalized before these bills come to us to vote on, because it's not just something they're asking you to do. It has to be enforced. And if we're not going to enforce it and have good background way of doing that, then why do I have to change my lights? I'm all in favor of the light change, by the way. This is not the issue. I have programmable LED fixtures in my house, and I am going to the outside fixtures. I like that idea. But that's me. We're going to have to enforce this on everybody in this town. And if you walk in, well, tonight, because I reported at your house that you didn't change it, you put the wrong light bulb in, and you, because I'm mad at you, we're going to see this, and the building commissioner has to make a stand. Then the next guy over, will I get along with, I'm not going to report him. This is a very difficult thing to police, no matter whether I like it or not. I made a motion to indefinitely postpone. Where does that stand?
No, we have to dispose of the amendment first, Mr. Cleary.
Okay.
Come right over here on the amendment, please.
Tim Flynn, 18 Main Street. I'd like to make a motion to move on this art, on this amendment and bring it to vote.
So you're moving the question on the amendment. It requires an immediate vote, it requires a two-thirds vote, in order to cut off debate, at which point we would vote on the amendment, and then, depending on the answer to that, we would go back to the main motion. So this vote is just to move the question. It's a two-thirds vote. If you want to move the question on the amendment right now, please raise your cards. All right. And all opposed. All right. So I declare a two-thirds majority. We've moved the question, so now we go immediately to a vote on the amendment, which is, I'm sorry, it's a zoning bylaw, so it's a two-thirds majority. Actually, I'm going to, I need to clarify that, counsel. Is it, is it amendment to a zoning bylaw also two-thirds? All two-thirds. All right. It's, let's be clear. Two-thirds majority on the amendment, all in favor. Please raise your cards.
I don't understand.
All opposed.
We don't understand what you're doing.
All right, all right. Fair enough. Please come to the mic. I heard you don't understand what I'm doing. So let me, let me, that's, that's absolutely fine. Ms. Houlihan made an original motion under Article 35.
And I thought that's what we just voted on.
No.
No.
So let me explain, ma'am. She then proposed an amendment to Article 35. That's what we've been discussing. The gentleman just came to the mic and said, he moves the question, meaning he doesn't want to talk about the amendment anymore. He just wants to vote on it. Okay? And, and that, and that passed. So now we are at the point where we are voting on the amendment.
Yeah. And we just-
Question, concern? Okay. So now, two-thirds majority is required to pass the amendment, all in favor. Please raise your cards. Okay, all opposed? Okay. I declare a two-thirds majority on the amendment. The amendment has passed, the First Amendment. Now, Mr. Cleary, you have indicated, where'd you go? I see you. As you came to the mic, you've, you've indicated a desire to indefinitely postpone the article. I know Ms. Houlihan has another amendment planned. I don't know if you want, you're, you're free to make your motion now, and then the, the hall can consider whether they want to hear the Second Amendment before they make that decision.
I, Jim Cleary, 51 Central Street. I want to indefinitely postpone, because no matter what the amendment is, we're going to be right back to where we were, trying to figure out how to enforce this. We no longer can have a passing of vote.
Let's get, let's get your motion on the floor. Do we have a second on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 35? Yes. Okay. I, I think you've been very clear about where you're coming from on this. Any other comment or question about Mr. Cleary's motion to indefinitely postpone? Yes?
Hi, Lisa Dunderdale, 122 Deerfoot Road. I'm just curious, how many phone calls does the building commissioner get on light bylaw issues?
So, thank you for the question. Our planner, town planner, Karina Quinn and Sarah Hecker, her assistant, reviewed that, and I think there was less than a handful over the last five years. Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
What's the point of order?
May I be able to present, because we're voting on an article that I did not actually prepare, I have a prepared presentation for, and I feel like having a full set of information versus just one perspective on the floor. So I haven't actually given the why you should vote for this.
Okay, that's fair enough. Yes, other point of order?
indefinitely postpone. Motion on the floor is to indefinitely postpone.
The motion on the floor is to indefinitely postpone, and that's what we should be limiting our debate to.
I understand your point, Mr. Hamilton. It's to definitely postpone the main article. It doesn't, it doesn't have a superior position to the main article. So we, we can debate it, but you've heard Ms. Houlihan say she has some information to pass to the hall, and the hall maybe will want to hear that. So we'll, but, but that'll be part of the consideration of this motion. Ms. Gillespie, you have something?
I'll have something after Marty presents.
Okay.
To the article, I mean, to the motion to indefinitely postpone.
Okay, okay. We do have a motion to indefinitely postpone on the floor. It's been seconded. Ms., no, it has been seconded. Ms. Houlihan has some information she'd like to present in order to fully inform the hall. At this point, I'm obliged to take this vote. So the motion to indefinitely postpone is a majority vote.
Excuse me, are you not letting Marty speak?
I, I have to, I have to process the motions as they come.
So can I speak to the motion?
Sure.
I'm chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and we unanimously voted to support this article. And I think we're on a road here of thinking, people are going to be driving by your house, looking at your lights. And we look at it more. And that could be done now with the current bylaw, and it's not happening. So that's not going to increase with having better standards. What it means for us mostly, what we were considering, new buildings will have to abide by this when they go in. Or if a parking lot on Route 9 switches their lights over, so the now, just drive by Route 9, drive down White Bagley, go to Fayetteville, go to Breakneck Hill, it's brightly lit like a parking lot. This would prevent massive, large-scale, bright lighting, and it would also mean new developments would be held to a higher standard. And the Open Space Commission is concerned about this. And the Open Space Commission is concerned about this. We think everyone should be for their health and many other personal reasons. But for wildlife, birds that are disappearing, we've lost 30% of our common backyard birds in the last 50 years. Light pollution is a major cause. People care, and they say, "Oh, I don't see dragonflies anymore." Dragonflies make their little lights so that the females can see them. And if they can't find the male because it's too brightly lit, no more future generations. They're not the only insect, but there's one people seem to care about. Many other insects, birds, and wildlife are greatly impacted by this. And we think, you're not going to start getting knocks on your door to say, "Change your light bulbs." You're going to see more responsible permitting of lights that impact not just wildlife, but human health and your ability to sleep. And certainly with COVID, and knowing that it impacts people with other health issues more. Reducing the risk of diabetes and other issues that they have clearly documented that this blue light causes. Makes sense. Don't be pound foolish, penny wise. Pass the bylaw. No one's going to knock on your door. I guarantee you it, because they haven't been knocking on your door already, and we already have a bylaw with the same enforcement issues. Let's do it better. And we can vote to make that happen. And then, in the future, if everyone's yards are out of compliance, we can figure out how to deal with that. But let's take care of the big issues today. Vote to not postpone, and then vote to approve the article.
All right. Any further comment or question on the motion to indefinitely postpone? All right, seeing none, this is a majority vote. If you're voting in favor of this, you're voting in favor of indefinitely postponing the article. A vote in opposition would defeat that motion, and then we'd be back to talking about the article itself. So all those in favor of indefinitely postponing, please raise your cards. All those opposed? All right, so the motion to indefinitely postpone fails. We are back to the original motion. We have one amendment that's been accepted. Ms. Houlihan?
So I would like to give the presentation prior to the next amendment.
Please do.
And so my name is Marnie Houlihan, as previously said. I'm also joined today by Dr. Destin Heilmann, who also lives in town and is a professor of chemistry and biochemistry at WPI. He's an expert in biomedical sciences, otherwise known as molecular medicine, or even some new cancer treatment. Destin is affiliated with Solf and is active in astronomy programming. The goal today is for me to spend a little time on the planning board and perspective of the outdoor illumination bylaw, and then Destin will step in to provide some perspective on the health and some of the really important components that Ms. Gillespie shared. So I really just have four, two things to say about the outdoor illumination bylaw. So the first part, it's being proposed for two reasons. The first is to modernize the language and incorporate more technically relevant illumination terms. Exactly as Ms. Gillespie has said, it's really for the planning board to be able to kind of monitor developments, residential developments, industrial, commercial developments, and make sure that they comply with new language. So the language is needed, updated, and the technical aspects of the bylaw needed updating. The second was to curtail pollution and reduce sky glow to create a healthy nighttime environment for our residents. So I have four things just to reinforce. Number one is that amendment we all just passed, that really just reinforces that no one needs to drop everything tomorrow and buy new light bulbs. The basically says that if you have light bulbs that apply, that are 1,800 lumens or more, so that's 120 watts, or 900 lumen spotlights, or floodlights, that those would apply, and when they break, vandalize, you're changing them out anyway, that's when we would ask you to go buy a 3,000 Kelvin color temperature light bulb or less, which is less blue light. Second point I want to make, Southborough is not the only town making these bylaw changes. 13 other towns have updated their lighting bylaws in the last few years. Three are in process, including us. And there's legislation, as I mentioned earlier, in both the House and Senate in Massachusetts to minimize blue light emissions. Number three, the current bylaw never addressed sports field lighting, but this bylaw has. In fact, Mooney and Neary Tennis were recently approved, and those plans are in full compliance with the current bylaw and the color temperature. So there's not a lot of harmful blue light coming off of those fields. So you can take a deep breath reassuring that your kids are protected from those lights. And finally, number four, the only significant change that matters to you is that when it's time to replace those bulbs I mentioned, then we were asked in this bylaw to comply by purchasing the 3,000 Kelvin light bulb or lower. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Heilmann, and I would like to make sure if any of you received your mailers, this is what he's talking to you about, the blue light and the health impacts on humans.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. So we know now that light pollution has a dramatic impact on the environment, but also humans. We know that all animals are controlled in part by an internal clock. That clock, when we are exposed to light at night, is offset in a rather dramatic way. We know that this impacts insects, fireflies, pollinators. We know it's birds, owls, song and seabirds, frogs, turtles, foxes, bats that munch on mosquitoes, which we all like, and you. We know in humans that this dramatically affects our sleep-wake cycle. We know it affects our mood, our digestion, our immunity. And the science has been mounting on this for years. But we know more recently that LED lights, the first wave of these, had a lot of blue wavelength light in it, bluish light coming out of them. And we now know that the human body and animals in particular are exquisitely sensitive to blue light. So the impact on light pollution has been even more dramatic, because this blue light is worse, it's higher in energy, it produces much more intense sleep-wake effects, more scatter glare, a lot more blind spots when we use these lights. And there's much more light pollution per bulb because of that stuff. But in particular, the American Medical Association in 2016 issued guidance because this was becoming alarming. And the amount of science coming back on this was pretty huge. And their guidance was that they were seeing effects on those that were exposed to the most light at night, on mood disorders, increases in diabetes and obesity, reproductive problems, breast, prostate. And there was a recent study in the Cancer Journal, which is a journal of the American Cancer Society, study of 460,000 patients that showed the highest quintile exposed to light at night, mostly doctors and nurses working night shifts, had a 55% increase in incidence of thyroid cancer. I know it sounds odd that light could be producing these. But the evidence is mounting, and from a biochemical standpoint, we know precisely how this is affecting our bodies now. So I urge you to support this. We can, we have beautiful skies in Southborough. This place is beautiful at night. And we can limit the impact on the environment, but especially on human health by doing this. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, Ms. Houlihan, I'll have you put your second amendment on the floor.
Thank you. I move to amend the main motion by adding the following words to subsection D Flood Luminaire, artificial light in a bright and broad beam typically greater than 90-degree beam angle, illuminating a wider area for visibility in a short distance. These lights are typically used for landscape lighting, parking lots, architectural lighting, fork lighting, and other applications that require light spread. After the words fixture alphabetically and before the words front light in subsection D definitions. Additionally, by adding the following words to subsection D, Spot Luminaire, artificial light that projects a longer, narrow beam of light typically less than 90-degree beam angle, illuminating a narrow area over a long distance. These lights are often found in gardens, above garage doors, on police and search and rescue vehicles, or other applications where focused light is needed. After the words mounting height alphabetically and before uplight in subsection D definitions.
All right, does it receive a second? So, I mean, I'm going to say something first about this, because there's a lot of words. I think what I just heard is the definition of flood luminaire and the definition of spot luminaire are being added to the bylaw. Where they are and how they fit together and all that. Is that the gist of what just occurred?
That is exactly correct. And that was a specific request from the advisory board to add those definitions, and so we did.
All right, but, you know, that's not, we can continue to discuss it. I just wanted to clarify on that. So the motion to amend has been made and seconded. Comment or question about this motion to amend? All right, hearing none, requires a two-thirds majority vote to pass. All those in favor of this amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, I declare a two-thirds majority. That amendment passes also. Okay, we are back to now the main article on the floor. Any comment, question about the main article as it's been amended twice so far? Yes, sir?
Whitney Beals, 10 Chestnut Hill Road. We might live in the domicile that's farthest separated from the next home in all of town. But we have a great big street lamp very close to the house. And I'm curious to know if the street, the type of street lamps that will be used in the future would need to comply with the new bylaw, A, and B, would there be a savings to the town for swapping out those bulbs?
So, sir, you're talking about actual, you know, street lamp, not your own lamp, but...
It's a town lamp.
It's a town lamp on the street, but it's close to your house, understood. You want to take that, please?
Yeah, so the, I guess to answer in aggregate, there is a savings to the town by moving to LED through those leased light bulbs. And they have negotiated and agreed to placing 3,000 Kelvin or below to meet our bylaws.
Excellent. We may just have found the money to pay for any assistance that might be needed to enforce the bylaw, Mr. Colery.
Other comment or question on the main motion as amended? All right, seeing none, we now are at the final vote. This is the motion with two amendments. Requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All in favor, please raise your cards. Sorry, you can put your cards down.
No, the definitions are separate. I mean, the definitions are one. You've got them separate, but it's, they're all covered. She moved them that way. If you wanted to clean up the paperwork, we can do that.
All right, the question was, as the paperwork was originally submitted, the two different definitions that we just added were separate amendments. But Ms. Houlihan moved them together, and that's how I handled it, and that's fine. She'll clean up the paperwork. So, all in favor of the article, please raise your cards. Thank you, all opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority. Article 35 passes. Article 36, zoning, site plan review, Ms. Latrell.
I move that the town of Southborough vote to amend the zoning code of the town of Southborough, Article 3 entitled Use Regulations, by amending thereto Section 174-10 entitled Site Plan Approval as Printed in the Warrant.
So receive a second. It does, Ms. Latrell?
Good afternoon, my name is Mimi Latrell. I am a member of the elected planning board. The planning board reviews proposed development projects to assure what is proposed is allowed on the site, that the projects comply with statute and local bylaws, and protect the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Southborough. Article 36 proposes two substantive changes to Section 174-10 Site Plan Approval. The first, and the main goal of the planning board in proposing this amendment is to eliminate the Site Plan Review Committee for minor site plan review and have minor site plan review go before the elected planning board. Minor site plan review is reserved for any new development or expansion of use, excluding single and two-family homes that adds less than 2,000 square feet or would require 5 to 19 parking spaces. The reason the planning board proposes eliminating the Site Plan Review Committee is because the Site Plan Review Committee is in conflict with Town Code 9-23, the intent of which is that only town residents be voting members on boards, committees, and commissions. And the Site Plan Review Committee is made up of department heads, who, most of which are not residents of the town. Town council opined that by eliminating the Site Plan Review Committee and having minor site plan come before the planning board for review would bring the process in line with Town Code 9-23, still afford the planning board the ability to seek advice and comments from other town officials during plan reviews. Additionally, it would create a more transparent process by allowing open public access to decision-making, would solve historic concerns under open meeting law, create more consistent compliance, and streamline the process. The second change, on the recommendation of town council, constructive approval language was removed in Section 174-10 dot F. Constructive approval results in the approval of the site plan should the planning board fail to render a decision in the allotted time. Town council advised the planning board to reconsider any constructive approval provision in both minor and major site plan approval. The concern being that automatic plan approval after a date certain works against the planning board. And if a constructive grant were to occur, it could result in the legal effect of approving incomplete plans without sufficient conditions or terms, which could be detrimental to public interest. However, after receiving feedback from the board selectmen, the advisory committee and during public hearings with the planning board, the board intends to propose amendment to reinsert the constructive approval language into the proposed bylaw amendment, therefore focusing on the main purpose of the bylaw amendment to bring the section of the bylaw in line with Town Code 9-23.
So I'm going to have you put your amendment on the floor. I want to clarify for the folks. What I just heard, the amendment she's prepared to make puts what's in the warrant back to what's in the bylaw now. Is that correct?
Just the constructive grant language, yes.
Okay, okay. So the warrant has changed, the warrant changed the bylaw in two ways. They're reversing one of those via this amendment. So please go ahead.
I move to amend by adding the following words, failure of the planning board to act. To so act and notify the applicant within 60 days shall constitute approval of the site plan. After the words, copy of said agreement shall be filed with the town clerk.
All right, does it receive a second? It does, any comment or question regarding the amendment? All right, seeing none. Vote on the amendment is a two-thirds majority vote. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, I declare a two-thirds majority. Amendment passes. We're back to the main Article 36 with the, just the one aspect being modified. Comment or question on what remains now of Article 36? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 36, please raise your cards. All opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority. Article 36 passes.
Thank you.
Article 37. Article 37, citizens petition noise bylaw. Mr. Lapine?
I'm Peter Lapine, 27 Parkerville Road.
Can you start over? Your mic was off at the beginning. Go ahead.
My name is Peter Lapine, 27 Parkerville Road. I move that the town vote to amend the Town Code of the town of Southborough, Article 2, entitled General Legislation by creating a new chapter, 119, entitled Noise Regulations. 2, entitled General Legislation, by creating a new chapter, 119, entitled Noise Regulations, to include the content of Article 37 in the 2021 Southborough Town Warrant.
Does that motion receive a second? Okay, I heard a second. Mr. Lapine?
Okay, I see a number of people here today I've met with, both in 2002 and more recently at the transfer station. These people have shared many stories of noise issues in their Southborough neighborhoods. As Southborough has grown over the years, traffic has increased, and home building and yard maintenance seem to have become increasingly industrialized. Accompanying this industrialization is a huge increase in the level of noise. Lacking any formal regulatory limits on hours or days of operation, homeowners have depended on a combination of luck and common sense to ensure a peaceful coexistence. We all know common sense has been in short supply for some time, and luck is mostly a matter of chance. This is why my supporters and I are bringing forward a proposal to address the situation of noise in Southborough. Now, if there's any doubt about noise issues in Southborough, allow me to share the following. We have some statistics from Southborough Police Department. In 2013, they received 51 calls related to noise. In 2014, 52. In 2015, 118 calls. And in 2016, 132 calls. And for '17, '18, and '19, those statistics were no longer provided. So, in 2019, over the course of several months, I reviewed a dozen noise bylaws from Massachusetts towns, and have spoken with law enforcement commanders and officers from half that many communities about their enforcement activities. As a result, I took an existing noise bylaw that has been in effect for 10 years, and use that as a basis for this proposal, which matches the original by more than 95%. Forty-seven Massachusetts communities have noise bylaws. At a minimum, noise creates a disturbance disruptive to one's activities. There is a large body of scientific evidence describing the negative health effects of noise on the physical and mental well-being of humans, especially children and the elderly. The basic provisions in the noise bylaw provide boundaries around specified activities and equipment use in order to respect the rights of Southborough citizens. The establishment of such regulations will allow legal enforcement of these limits, something completely lacking today. I ask you now to provide your support for a noise bylaw which will help to ensure the respect for your person, property, and most importantly, the health of your families. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lapine. I've been informed that there has been a prefiled amendment to this motion, and I'm looking for, okay, come to the mic, sir. Introduce yourself. Tell us what you got.
It's a long way from the back of that hall. Michael Weis on 189 Cordova Road. I'm generally in support of this bylaw, however, I think it has one omission which I would like to amend. I would like to propose in Section 1.9G exemption, noise produced by animals either wild or domestic. And my feeling on this is that...
Well, let's, let's put that motion on the floor, please, first.
Okay.
So you would be moving to amend?
Yes, I'm moving to amend by adding in Section 1.9G, noise produced by animals either wild or domestic.
All right, does it receive a second? Yes, no? Yes, all right, now go ahead and speak to it.
So, as I said, I'm in generally in approval of this. One of the things I've noticed, though, is that occasionally in interneighbor affairs, dogs, pets, other things can be weaponized. For instance, there's a lady down the road that has a very loud dog. It is an annoyance, but on the other hand, I know she has some issues, and it's her support pet. And I just don't think that we want to be the pet police about objecting to other people's dogs or animals of any sort. I think the intent on this is commercial noise from blowers, mowers, parties, et cetera, which I fully support. So I would ask you to include this exemption as the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any comment or question about the amendment to exempt noise produced by, noise produced by animals wild or domestic? Mr. Hegarty has a question? All right.
It's a long walk from the front, too. Jim Hegarty, 14 Hippocress Drive. I ask this question as the town clerk, and I ask, we deal with dog licenses, and we deal with animal control, and we dog, dogs as a nuisance, so I wonder if this would conflict with the Town Code regarding nuisance animals, if this would prohibit that?
So I'm going to ask Town Council to opine whether the nuisance, whether a, basically if we allow dogs to bark, can they still be considered a nuisance animal under the other piece of the coat?
The town clerk makes an excellent point. State statute and local bylaw regulates excessive barking of dogs, and that is one of the issues that is created for, basically, a nuisance. Those laws would remain in full force and effect. The ability to enforce that amendment under this bylaw, which we don't review or approve because it's petitioned, they come in to you as they are submitted, as is the right of a petitioner under the Constitution. It would probably not be as enforceable as state law, which the Board of Selectmen get to do dog hearings for excessive barking and other reasons. So it doesn't conflict, but it's less ability to enforce. Does that answer the question?
I think so.
Okay.
Sir, you coming in the mic? Yep, go ahead, please.
Hi, Dan Kalenda, 7 Winderwoods Drive. So, this is, I see this as a bit of a ruse. So I've seen this over the years, people will come up and make an amendment that it seems so simple, everyone's going to vote yes for it, and it's just a way to get momentum to then vote, as we heard, the gentleman is a proponent of the article, to vote yes. The silliness of this, to me, can't be understated. I would encourage people to vote down the amendment, and then we'll have that opportunity next for the article itself.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment or question? Yes.
John Mello, 10 Birchwood Drive. I have a question. How do I know if my lawn equipment meets this guideline?
Mr. Lapine?
In Section 1.9 Special Provisions...
Come a little closer, please.
In Section 1.9 Special Provisions, Item D, the intermittent or occasional use during daytime of homeowner's light residential outdoor equipment.
I use a commercial lawnmower to do my lawn.
So the question is, how will he know whether that piece of equipment exceeds the limit?
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, fair enough. I think we don't know that, sir. Yeah, good point. Yes, ma'am?
So are we making a decision on the amendment?
Yeah, so, you know what, Town Council, Johnny on the spot, just redirected me exactly on that point, so you're exactly right. On the amendment, sir, over here. Okay. All right, seeing nothing further on the amendment, we are voting on the amendment to exempt noise from animals, domestic or otherwise. Requires a majority vote, so all in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, the amendment fails. We are back to the main motion on Article 37. Any comment or question on the original motion? You were first.
Matt Probst, 31 Woodland, I was wondering if Chief Paulus has an opinion on this article?
Chief?
I'll try to be as brief as I can. Obviously, just quick history, I came here in 2014. I was actually surprised that nothing was on the books. Been talking about it since then, spent a greater deal of time in 2016, 2017 with then resident Stivers, and going over probably 20 noise ordinance samples that we, we whittled down, and we made something that I thought that the police could live with as far as enforcement. This amendment, as it's written, is not ready yet.
Wait a minute, just, chief, you said amendment, do you mean this article, this, this motion?
I'm sorry, yes.
On the, on the warrant, okay, go ahead, it's not ready, go ahead.
The noise ordinance that's been presented is not ready yet. I think I've heard about the light bylaw, that it had a working group. I've been suggesting that now for over a year. I've had people come up to me most recently that have looked at this, and they have other issues besides what's in it. You know, all politics is local, and whatever neighborhood you live in, they expressed disappointment that they didn't have a say in this, especially with COVID. You know, the people that are going to really be tasked with enforcing it's the police department, although I've had many discussions over the phone with Mr. Lapine. I don't think that we've been able to sit down formally and work through some of the issues. I know a lot of it's based on a noise meter. In my previous employment, worked in a city, noise ordinance was very heavy in enforcement. We tried noise meters, did not work, we got rid of them. I've even checked most recently with a lot of peers in other towns. Some of them that have them basically said that they do not use them. And I'll try to be brief, I think my aha moment came up on this. I watched a Zoom meeting where it was presented to advisory, and I saw more confused faces sitting there, and questions about their lawn equipment, their landscaper, what the rules were. I think there's a lot of good things to start off slow in this, times of day, weekends, permitting, all kinds of things like that. But as it's written, we're just going, if you say zero to 60, we're starting at 60, and then we'd have to whittle down. I'd much rather get a working group and get it right before we had a, an article turned into a bylaw, which just did not work. And I say that, obviously, from, at the end of the day, people aren't going to be expecting the Board of Health to go out and enforce this. It's going to be your everyday police officer. And, you know, even last night when I read this article over again, it's very confusing, it's very complicated, it's more than there needs to be. So I'll, I'll let the discussion rest from there, but my opinion is, it's just not ready yet. And we've gone, you know, quite a amount of time without having it. I think some of the statistics that were read were misleading, and I've explained this in the past. Call might come in for noise, you go to that call, and it has to do with something totally different. And although if the dispatcher didn't change it in the log, it would still go down as noise, but it probably should have, should have been changed to something else. And most recently, I sent out statistics in the last three years where we pointed out what is actually a noise complaint compared to what showed up in the log, and the numbers are much smaller, I would, I think I recall, it's, it's less than one a week. So, if anybody else has any questions, I'll give somebody else the floor.
All right, thank you, we're going to come over here to this side. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Lisa Barasio, 13 Oregon Road. Just a couple points, I wanted to make the Hall aware that neither the Board of Selectmen nor the Advisory Committee supported this article. Speaking as a citizen, I have been one of those people that have had garbage trucks coming and picking up garbage, ding ding ding, bing bing bing, at 4:30 in the morning. I completely support the need for a noise bylaw, I just don't think this is it today. I don't think it's a good use of our officers. We talked earlier today about finally getting our numbers up to where they need to be to be able to patrol, have three patrol officers out at any given time supporting the town. You know, with Route 9 especially, you know, there's, there's added concern. So I wholeheartedly support something. If something would have came forward with ours, I think we could have probably all reached a conclusion on that. So I would just ask, kind of in support of what Chief Paulus has said today as well, I think there's more work that needs to be done, whether it's through a subcommittee or, you know, just citizens getting together. I think we need to be really careful on this. The last thing we want is neighbor pitting neighbor against something, as well as the additional cost. If you can't use some of these blowers with your landscapers, you know, we're not like a Newton or a Boston, you know, our lots are half acre and one acre or more. So the additional cost for you as a homeowner as well, if your landscaper cannot use the blowers that they come out in the fall, or if you're going to require them, the additional cost as well, those, those additional dollars get passed on to you. I think there's a way to do this, I think there's a path to do this, and I would ask that you not do this today, that we all work together and try to find out, find something that we can all agree with. Thank you.
Thank you, right over here, sir.
Simfling, 18 Main Street. I think this bylaw is well-intentioned, but it's, as other people have reiterated, I don't think it's ready for our vote. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this indefinitely.
So I'm going to forestall that for, for the time being, I'm going to, I've got some people at the mic, I want to hear what they have to say, and we may come back to that shortly. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Lisa Dunderdale, 122 Deerfoot Road. Want to thank Peter for researching the Massachusetts town that has noise bylaws, and speaking to the enforcing officials for their feedback on the process and how effective they are, and finally creating this proposed bylaw. I am a proponent and appreciate the feedback that I heard from residents at the transfer station and at Senior Center before COVID hit us. I'm a resident for 23 years who've been, and I've been surrounded by construction noise for over three years. I have been, my family has been affected by noise, and it's frustrated, and I'm frustrated with the lack of protection to our right to peace and quiet. We've experienced the drone of air compressors, explosions of pops from nail guns, idling large equipment after 7 o'clock at night. We've been woken up with the beep 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 of deliveries at 5:00 AM in the morning. I sit up straight in bed thinking it's the alarm going off, and I have no way to turn it off. No one should have to experience that intrusive noise. And the police officers I have spoken to when I've reported these noise complaints have been very empathetic, and they have expressed their frustration with the lack of a bylaw. No bylaw equals no enforcement. Their hands are tied. They could be doing better things with their time, and the guidelines of the bylaw will help reduce noise complaints. This, I just, I really want you to get your, I want you to think about this. Just as we kind of learned from the lighting bylaw, that there weren't many complaints, based on the statistics, we said, you know, between disturbances and noise complaints, we saw an increase from 2013 of 51 total to 132 in 2016 from the police. This actually comes from the annual town report that we get. We haven't seen those statistics from police since 2016. Chief Paulus just said that maybe it wasn't reported correctly, maybe they're down to one, one time per week. But I think with this bylaw, we're, we're going to see, we could potentially see less calls because there are guidelines out there for people to understand what they need to do. Now, once again, it's a matter of us making a call. It is, this allows us as residents to make a call about an intrusive noise and have it mediated and addressed. I really think between, you know, frustration is stress, it's not healthy for anyone. And I'm sure that there are other people that have similar situations. You may not have noise in your neighborhood right now, but things can change in an instant, and we don't have anything in place... And we don't have anything in place. And it's very frustrating as a resident that we have nothing, we can't make a phone call and nothing can be done. People, the police have come out and they've talked to me, and they basically look at me and they say, "I can't do anything about it because we don't have a noise bylaw." So it really depends on if your neighbor feels that what you're doing or if your contractor has come in to do work, if they feel it's an intrusive noise, you should have the right to make that complaint and have it mediated by the police. Does it mean that they're going to give you a citation? Does it mean that they're going to be patrolling your neighborhood with a sound level meter? No, that's not the case. It's all based on if you feel that you have an intrusive noise that is bothering you and it could be affecting your health. So I ask you all to support this bylaw. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to stay on this side. They were queued up.
David Eckberg, 5 High Street. I have a question and then a quick example. My question is to, I'm surprised and frankly, a little disappointed that both the Selectmen and the Advisory have not supported this. And I'm curious to know whether they have not supported it on the basis of form or substance. In other words, did we get lost in the weeds of all the language? Or are we just simply not concerned about noise abatement?
Multiple reasons. And one of the main ones is, and I'll be, I'll go even farther than Chief Paulus. My view is it's completely unenforceable. Basically, we'd pass whatever it is, how many pages bylaw, that is completely unenforceable. It is, and I looked, I looked at a number of the towns that have noise bylaws. I don't think there's a single one that has anything that approaches the complexity of this one. Most of them start off, as Chief Paulus indicated, by restricting noise by hours. They don't get into decibel levels and whether or not you can have a vacuum running and whether it's a commercial lawnmower or a non-commercial lawnmower. Again, the complexity of this, I just find overwhelming. I agree with Chief Paulus. If a noise bylaw makes a lot of sense, I think most of the other members of the Board of Selectmen agree with me on that. The complexity of this is overwhelming. Start off with something reasonable and, more importantly, enforceable.
Okay, thank you. We get an advisory explanation for the advisory position, please? Yes, sure.
So to answer Mr. Eckberg's question, it was a former. It was substance, not form. Advisory absolutely thinks that we need a noise bylaw. We just don't think this is the right one. This one's not ready for prime time. Advisory tried to meet with the proponent on this, had trouble getting together with him, had a meeting scheduled, and he did not come. Did not come to BOS to talk about it. Kept talking about amendments from the last year when we had the problems, and they were never made. So we are all for putting together noise bylaw, but we just don't think this one has been vetted. There is lots of issues, including not being able to run the town generator, et cetera. So we want a noise bylaw, but we want a committee put together that knows how to do this, to come forth with one that we think is more tenable.
Thank you. That's good news. Here's my quick example of the issue facing us. On March 25th of this year, at 7:01 a.m., diagonally across the street from me, in comes a crew of people with industrial strength leaf blowers, dethachers, and aerators, high-decibel, early-morning situation, to the point where even though this has been going on up and down High Street for years, I went out and talked to the people. It's a Southborough company, I won't mention the name. And they kind of blew me off. And they said, you know, "We're cleared by the owner of the company. We can do what we want, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning." So a little bit later that morning, actually right after 8 o'clock, I was on my way to the dump, and I thought, well, you know, I'll go to the police station and just find out if registering some sort of a complaint has any import. And I, after talking to two people, I got referred to an Officer Woodford. And if he's here, he can corroborate this. He wasn't trying to blow me off, but that was the net effect. He basically said, "Go talk to the Town Hall." So we have, we have a history of many years of just kicking this can down the road. It gets worse and worse. The situation on High Street can't be unique to High Street. It's a town-wide problem. And the business of not having owners, even Southborough residents who are owners of companies, show a little bit more manners and then have the police just say, "Well, you know, go talk to Town Hall." I find that very unacceptable. So I would highly support what Advisory said here, that we get behind some sort of noise abatement issue, recognizing that it's hard to quantify with respect to decibels and hours, but that can be wrestled to the ground. So I would support doing something rather than continuing just to pretend we don't have an issue.
All right. I don't think there is anybody here, and if there is, please let me know, who's saying we don't need something. So if we could confine the remainder of the comments to whether this is it or not and why, I think we'll step through quicker at this point.
Karen Muggeridge, 15 Parmenter Road. So I will abide by the request that you just made and volunteer for the committee because we definitely need the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Sir, you've been waiting.
Joe Provo, 2 High Ridge Road. Skipping a few points in deference to your observation, but I did want to say with regards to statistics, many of us know there is no current law, so we don't bother calling. There's, in response to Ms. Baraccio's comment, I'm sorry, even in the large lots we have on the south side, it's still those industrial blowers just going, driving all over, pretending they're street legal and doing 1,000. Sorry. I would very much borrow from another governance organization that I'm involved in and say, you know, "Strong support in spirit. Don't support as written, and definitely volunteer to help."
Okay. I've got three people at the mic. We're going to cut it off there. Is anybody at the mic prepared to say they support it as written? Because I think we've got plenty on the other side of that. Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Houlihan.
Ms. Houlihan, Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford Road. I do support this. I also have lived through many years of waking up to large vehicles doing construction idling for a half an hour before even 7:00 a.m. And that's on weekdays, Saturday, and sometimes Sunday. I think we need something. And I agree that instead of kicking the can, let's just get something into the bylaw. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Over here.
Betsy Resblom, 5 Strawberry Hill Road. Don't like noise. I think we need something. But make no mistake, voting this down doesn't mean you're kicking the can down the road. What it means is you don't want to be bound by a bylaw, and it is a bylaw. We've had some confusion on that and other articles. It's a law. I've spoken to about a dozen people, and nobody seems to know. Okay, true confessions, I don't mow my own lawn. A man comes with a really loud machine, and he's there for a half an hour, and I have no idea, but I'm sure the decibel level is above what is permitted, and it isn't exempted. It's not ready for prime time. I appreciate everybody who's working on it. Nobody loves noise. I guess I'll volunteer for the committee. Thank you.
All right, last comment here.
Lisa Dunderdale, 122 Deerfoot Road. The measurements in decibels would be taken from a sound level meter if a call comes in that there's an intrusive noise. It's not being taken at the site of the machine. It is being taken at least 50, 50, I'm sorry, I think it's 50 feet away. And with that, the decibel level decreases. So for the most part, I mean, so at a distance, that level decreases, and most of those machines will be in the right range. But I just want to remind you that it only takes, it only becomes in effect if someone calls in a noise complaint.
All right, thank you. I'm going to suggest we're ready to vote. And coincidentally, there isn't anybody else at the mic. This is a general bylaw, so it just requires a majority vote to be enacted.
Point of order?
Yes.
We're voting on a motion to indefinitely.
I can't hear you, Mr. Hamilton. Sorry.
Motion to indefinitely postpone.
No, so it's, your point of order is well taken. I didn't, I forestalled that motion, but if you want to get up and make it, or the gentleman who did before.
It's been made. The motion to indefinitely postpone was made.
No, I forestalled it, Al. I didn't allow it. I didn't allow the second, and we didn't, we haven't considered it. But I'm allowing it now, so let's do it.
I move to indefinitely postpone.
All right, does it receive a second? All right. Question on the motion to indefinitely postpone.
I do think I know the answer to this. But if this is indefinitely postponed, does a subsequent bylaw being proposed have to wait a certain length of time? Or would it be a completely different bylaw?
No, there'd be no restriction on a new bylaw, a new petition, something coming at the next town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Whenever that might be. Okay. Any other question or comment on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Seeing none. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 37, please raise your cards. All those opposed? All right, Article 37 is indefinitely postponed. With my great thanks for your patience today, we are at our final article, Article 39. Citizens petition for regarding a Flag Road truck exclusion. Mr. Linden.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I am Jonas Linden of 39 Flag Road, and I represent several residents in the area concerned. I have a motion to see if the town of Southborough will vote to strongly suggest that the Board of Selectmen direct the Department of Public Works, or DPW, to conduct an analysis of Flag Road for the purpose of instituting a commercial truck exclusion, similar to Latasquama Road, or do anything, or act, or do or act anything in relation thereto.
Thank you. Does it receive a second? All right, does?
Thank you.
Mr. Linden, do you want to explain your motion?
Yes, please. So fellow residents of Southborough, the importance of this truck exclusion cannot be underestimated. For those who have seen the supporting material we posted on the website, it's obvious why this is needed. For those who haven't, let me give you a quick summary of why we need your support. First, what is a truck's exclusion? A heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, or HCVE, is an exclusion for any commercial vehicle with a carrying capacity over 2.5 tons from traveling along a public way. There are exceptions. For example, it doesn't apply to heavy commercial vehicles using the roadway to make deliveries or collections. So why should you support this? There's no question that from a state law perspective, this road qualifies for a truck's exclusion under the Mass Amendments to the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. In fact, there's precedent. The Board of Selectmen approved a truck exclusion for a similar road, Latasquama Road, about 10 years ago. And finally, the safety of these children who use this road to get to the trawler and the nearest schools is at stake. We have documented issues of safety vehicles getting blocked on Flag Road by smaller vehicles, as well as close encounters between biking children and vehicles, and tractor trailers destroying property. Please support this truck exclusion by voting for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let me just, at one point of clarity regarding the article, in case there's any confusion at all, you're not voting to impose a truck exclusion on Flag Road. You're very precisely voting, and he just used the word "support", which I think makes sense. You're voting to strongly request the Selectmen to direct DPW to study it. So I think that's an important clarification. Any comment or question with regard to Article 39? Are we coming to the mic here? Okay, yes, go ahead.
Cola, 5 General Henry. I have two questions. My first one is, I have found in this town that when we have traffic studies, we can, it seems like they're never in the favor of the people don't want to make this town a small town. So the first thing is, by saying yes to what he's proposing, are we saying a traffic study is included? Or have you already got a traffic study that confirms that this would be a good idea?
Is Ms. Gallagher still here? So I don't know the answer to that. The article, the motion refers to an analysis. What's contained in the analysis? Does it include a traffic study? I don't know. I don't know if you know, Mr. Linden.
No, I don't.
Yep.
The second question is, on what grounds was Latasquama given this certification? And who was it that established that? Was it the residents, which is what I think it was? Or was it the Selectmen as this is being proposed to?
Well, again, the Selectmen have the power to, the residents can't impose a truck exclusion unilaterally. It would go through the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if we have anybody here from that timeframe who would have any light to shed on that.
Kate Battles?
I'm sorry?
Kate Battles? Okay. Just because she's a strong advocate for Latasquama, so that's why I thought she might know.
Okay.
I just don't feel like we know what we're voting for. I think most of us understand Flag Road's issues, and we've understood some previous responses the town has made with regards to changing the way that road is, people are able to travel on that road, and that has gone nowhere. So I feel like this will go nowhere if we don't know what we're really voting on.
Well, I think, I think you're right, and you're right about it may go nowhere, but I think what you're voting on is very clear. You're voting on a request to, you're voting to support a strong request to the Board of Selectmen. They may or may not take you up on that request. So you're right. What happens after this is anybody's guess. But you're simply voting to make that request. Yes, sir?
Matt Probst, 31 Woodlands. My question is, does Advisory have a recommendation as we add town meeting?
Advisory does not support the article. Are you coming to the mic in the green? Okay.
Thank you. Jeff Caparo, 34 Deerfoot. I'd just like to say I'm a strong advocate for this. It's asking maybe too little, only that the activity be considered. This is a hazardous road, and I'd like to point out that the town has made some remedies with the installation of speed limit signs, active speed monitoring. A bunch of other remedies have been proposed in anticipation of a Park Central proposal. Think about what traffic volume would do to this road that's already hazardous. So I'd just like to say, this is a very simple motion, and I'd like to know on what basis the Advisory opposes. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Coak.
We have been told by Karen Gallagher, the Director of DPW, that she believes that the road won't qualify for a truck exclusion. You've got to have enough trucks on a road to qualify. She's done some counts recently for other reasons, so she doesn't believe it. So that's part of the reason. But again, I agree with the gentleman forming. This is not a big deal. All you're doing is voting to ask the Board of Selectmen to consider this. Simple.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Karen Handlon Schimkus, Limburg Road. I strongly urge everyone who has come out and stayed through this
and stayed through this long meeting to strongly support this simple request. When it comes to protecting the safety of our residents, especially the residents of these roads, and the children who are coming to these schools, we absolutely have to support this. It's non-binding, but again, we're talking about health and safety of our children, walkers, joggers, bikers, plenty of close encounters, an 18-wheeler tractor trailer being towed off the trottyer children's footpath. We have photos of that. Multiple tractor trailers going over lawns, mine included, in these neighborhoods. It's dangerous. You have, we have photographs of fire trucks unable, unable to pass and go down the road, blocked by other vehicles, and not large vehicles. So, again, when it comes to health and safety of ourselves, I would urge you to vote for this non-binding request, and we really need to do something about it. If Lattisquama got one, they absolutely do not surpass in terms of counts, truck counts. It's unjustified there. So, if they got one, as I understand from Mr. Linden, all the records are now missing, nowhere to be found in town hall, right? Nobody remembers. But it passed. Why did it pass? Because the Board of Selectmen took up the responsibility, listened, listened, listened to the expressions of concern over the health and safety of their own residents. And in that case, you didn't have incidences of fire trucks unable to pass. That's what we've got here. Really, if you have an 18-wheeler being towed off the children's footpath, I would, myself, my own opinion, I call it gross negligence. Gross negligence if this doesn't seal through. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Gittens, 73 Flag Road. I would ask you all to vote for this, too. We can't know enough about traffic on Flag Road.
Thank you. All right. This will be the last comment right over here.
Thanks. Joe Palmer, 158 Parkerville. If the problem is fire vehicles, a study and an exclusion is not going to do any good for this road. So, I'm not opposed to this, but we need a better solution for Flag if that's the problem, because a study isn't going to solve it.
All right, thank you. This is a advisory non-binding article. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the passage of the motion on Article 39, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Again, just want to thank everybody for coming out and participating today, especially our town clerk, Mr. Heggerty, who puts all this together. At this point, thank you. With any luck, if, even if we're coming back in the fall, which is not that far away, we'll be inside by then. Do I have a motion to dissolve the 2021 annual town meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is dissolved. Thank you.